September 4th. What?
Go ahead.
Okay. Got me. Sept- okay, good morning, good afternoon, good evening. It's Wednesday, September 4th, 2024. Welcome to the Town of New Canaan Town Council Town Hall Meeting Room for our 7:00 PM public hearing. We will, this is actually a special meeting. We'll first have up on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if everyone please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, can we get the roll call, please?
Rita Bettino.
Here.
Tom Butterworth.
Here.
Hans.
Here.
Luke Coniston.
Mike Morrow.
Here.
Maria Norton.
Here.
Kimberly Norton.
Here.
Roman.
Here.
Christina Ross, here.
Eric Tunam.
Here.
Penny Young.
Here.
Jennifer Zonis.
Here.
Have a forum.
Thank you. We'll now call the meeting to order. Number two on the agenda, public hearing. Members of the public are invited to speak to the town council on the proposed 2024 Plan of Conservation and Development Draft. We have four people signed up in the room. And is there anybody on Zoom?
No one on Zoom has raised their hand yet.
Okay, very good. So we will, I think we'll have, we'll entitle each speaker to four minutes. I think that's appropriate, a little bit longer than usual, given the matter we're discussing. So if no one really has any objection, then we'll move forward. So first on the docket is Neil Banks-Dinknot. Sorry, I apologize.
Turn on the microphone in front of you by pressing. It just says push, yeah, until it turns green. There you go. Thanks.
I'm Neely Banks-Dinknot. I'm speaking for the New Canaan Preservation Alliance this evening. I'm at 137 Elm Place in the area. We, we still continue to be interested in the responsibility of the implementation and of how this P O C D is implemented, by whom and when and where. So what we did is the first time that we responded to the P O C D draft was back in November and we suggested that there be an implementation committee that would help guide us through this process. That didn't seem to go over that well. So we're trying rebranding it, calling it a steering committee. And it will do just what we said, which is it will help steer us through this P O C D. We think that it should include not just planning and zoning, but should include like the first selectman, chairman of planning and zoning, the historic district commission, the historical review committee, town council, land trust, even NCPA. But we think that by having all the stakeholders in the room at one time and perhaps doing it a couple of times a year, that that would allow the town to, all at the same time, figure out what's going on, what things are working, what things haven't worked yet, and maybe allow for a little bit more agility to switch our goals. The, by, you know, we, we definitely, this, this P O C D is like a 10-year wishlist. And we really, there should be some way, some group that says, these are our priorities, these are the needs, these are our wants, this is what it's all going to cost. I personally just went through this with sidewalks back in July. There, all over the P O C D for 2014 was, oh, we need more and more sidewalks, more and more sidewalks. This year, the first selectwoman said, we really can't afford maintaining them in the liability. So now we are in 2024, and again, it's more and more sidewalks. So perhaps if the Board of Representatives from the Board of Finance, Board of the Selectmen, Planning and Zoning, Town Council, if you're all in the same room, you could, we could work all of this out and figure out what it is that we want and what it is that we, that we need to have. We also have, would have recommended that there be an architectural review board. Right now, Planning and Zoning handles the zoning issues for an application. Building Department handles the life safety for an application. But there should be some group that actually make sure that the commercial buildings are fitting within our, what our town looks like and the town that we love so much. So there has been mentioned that the village district guidelines would, should be incorporated into the zoning documents. Village District Guidelines include a design committee. So that's consistent with what you already, that they're thinking of. But we, as a group, definitely think that it's a great thing to do and a necessary thing. And then the last thing is the Historical Review Committee itself. You know, they are supposed to be kind of oversee all historic buildings other than the local historic district. The only problem is they don't get involved with anything until the building department contacts them and says, we've just gotten a demolition application in and we, you know, is this building significant or not? The problem is that, that sometimes planning and zoning has already approved a new structure, not knowing that an old structure was coming down. So it gets a little awkward. So what we'd, we would suggest is the questions that are asked on the demolition application, which is, are you demolishing anything? How large, you know, how large is it? And what year was it built? Should be asked on the planning and zoning applications. So that way, rather than waiting till, till we already know it, once they want to demolish it, we can go ahead and, and the HRC can begin to review, is this building worthy? Again, in most buildings, and there are many houses in New Canaan that are not worthy. So it's not as if we're adding some crazy requirement onto it, but there are many that are. So what the goal has always been, the 90-day delay was supposed to encourage people to perhaps reuse what they already have. I believe one of the Moderns had, was able to reuse their, their glass houses as a pavilion, a swimming pavilion. So it, but they have to have enough time to actually meet with the homeowner and get that resolved. Leave that if we get this done during the planning and zoning stage application, that, that will indeed resolve it. I would like to say that I really, I appreciate all the hard work that's been going on with the town council and planning and zoning. And in order to get this P O C D complete, I mean, we started reading drafts in October. So we're, we're on a year now. So thank you all very much.
Ask the questions, right?
Can I make, are we hearing, not, I'm sorry. I just want, this is more, are people being heard? Is, I just want to make sure that everyone's being recorded.
Microphone closer, I agree, Rita.
Yeah, that's why, because I want to make sure that everyone's being heard. Oh, I understand, but I didn't know she was close enough to the, yeah. So I just think.
Yeah, it should be pulled closer to them when they.
Yeah, maybe we should pull it closer.
So closer to the chair.
Can you turn them both on at this time?
Let's pull them much closer to the chair.
Closer, maybe, can we?
Are you asking questions of any of the, of the public or not?
Generally, that's not how we do it. So I think.
I didn't know, since it was a.
Yeah, no, they're.
Input into a document that we are about to approve. I just didn't know.
Yeah, I mean, generally, it's, you know, they're invited to speak about their thoughts about the agenda item and we move it along. I think in the past, it's been a little problematic.
Yeah, no, I, I, I understand that.
I think as a matter of precedent, it might work tonight, but as a general rule, we really need, I think, to stay with the structure.
Right. Anybody else have a concern? I mean, I'm more interested if you think we should just have, receive the comments and move on, or do you want to have interaction? I mean, you know, I can dictate it, but I would say, I think we should just take the comments and move along and have our discussion. But, you know, we represent the people. So if we want to have the interactive discussion, you know, I can persuade it.
Yeah.
Mary?
Yeah.
I, I would suggest that we answer the questions when we are discussing it among ourselves here. So if they want to stay on, if they want, if they actually have a question that's being asked. This way, we move the public hearing along and then we get into the conversation.
Sounds fair to me and it kind of sticks within the bounds of precedent, as Tom said. So I think I'm okay with that. All right, next up.
Teresa Piankowski, I'm sorry, I butcher your last name every time. Can you pronounce it for me one last time so that I? Just make sure the.
Microphone is close enough to you. I would pull it closer.
It's about the trains.
Teresa Piankowski, I live at 161 Old Studio Road here in Canaan. Thank you for the opportunity to publicly express my concern that the inclusion of a comprehensive sidewalk extension plan in the 2024 P O C D acts as an endorsement by the P O C D Subcommittee as well as the broader P and Z in town council. The 2014 P O C D included a map which indicates an interest in extending a sidewalk from Bristow Bird Sanctuary to Gower Road, which I have opposed for safety reasons. I was told this spring that I was up against P O C D interest in a sidewalk there. I believe the 2024 P O C D should reflect recent developments and relevant information. It should acknowledge concerns for pedestrian safety along the sharp curve as discussed at police commission meetings, for example. At this summer's bylaws and ordinances meetings, First Selectman Deanna Carlson stated she would not support the installation of sidewalks if town continued to be responsible for snow removal and liability. Town has been maintaining less than half the sidewalks they were responsible for. Town had assured residents they would maintain in an effort to pass a referendum to install Main Street sidewalks years ago. Town attempted to push maintenance and liability on residents who abut sidewalks on town property through a rejected ordinance change. Town remains responsible and liable, apparently without sufficient funding. Therefore, safety, the loss of support and funding should be addressed to properly update the 2014 P O C D. Chris Herring, a current member of P and Z Committee and the P O C D Subcommittee was on, was an alternate member of P and Z when he and neighbors who live around the sharp curve of Route 106 co-signed an October 2021 email to many residents seeking support for traffic calming, increased pedestrian safety measures on the stretch of Old Stamford Road, stating, to put it bluntly, it is a matter of when, not if, there is a fatal accident. They had engaged with the New Canaan Police Department and the Department of Public Works and recognized their personal interests, stating, aside from the obvious personal interests of those who live on the road and along the curve. Chris Herring did not disclose his position. Chris Herring created and shared with town bodies the 2018 New Canaan Resident Path Petition for Residents and Children and a Road Safety Project Old Stamford Corridor, Park Street, Farm Road petition, listing residents' names and addresses without signatures, including mine, without my knowledge and consent. This petition includes an excerpt from the 2014 NC Plan of Conservation Sidewalk Extension Map, a Herring 2022 Signature Petition and Working Document, including names, addresses, mobile numbers, home numbers, and email addresses of New Canaan residents with varying degrees of detail and not all informed or consenting, again, including me, was also shared with town. The placement of members on P and Z's P O C D Subcommittee and their personal interests in P O C D goals, strategies, and actions is relevant, especially since P and Z can disregard the concerns of the elected town council with a vote.
So, thank you. Jacomo Landy.
Jacomo Landy, 313 Elm Street. Thanks for having the meeting. I'll make a couple of points. I'll say whether they're yours or ours, to do with it what you want. But I'm not sure why exactly you guys are taking a vote tonight on this issue, because I think the public comment period appeared to be advertised through the middle of September. So not sure how that dynamics works, but I'll leave that to you. The second one, which is more relevant, first, I definitely tip my hat to everybody that's put this together. It's a huge piece of work, so I know it's difficult. But let's just talk sewer for a second. We've had a lot of discussions about capacity on sewer and this document references a 1.2 million capacity versus 1.7 million, 1.2 million use per day versus 1.7 capacity per day. It also refers to an AECOM study, which I think is either about to be delivered or has been delivered or whatever. But the town spent a ton of money on, is spending a ton of money on a sewer capacity comprehensive study. And I would suggest that this document just merely refers to that. I've written to various people about the difference between actual use capacity and statutory capacity. So when you look at sewer, it's driven by Connecticut regulations, which are how many gallons per day, per bedroom? And it's difficult for a person from the outside to calculate it, but I have done it, which sort of shows that we are over our statutory capacity, not necessarily what we use. And that's relevant when you get to redevelopment. Also, this document doesn't talk about ability to actually pump certain amount of volume from all parts of the sewer system. So if you're in an extreme, can you use all of that available capacity? Or is that capacity only usable, for example, if you are at, close to a certain pumping station? So to get around that issue, I would remove that sentence and refer to the AECOM study, which I'm sure will be good. The next point is about the sewer map. Most of the maps in this document are extremely precise. When you look at the sewer map, it's actually quite vague. And I'm not really sure why that's the case, but the town does have a very precise sewer map from January 2018. So I would suggest that that is incorporated. As we know, we've had a lot of dialogue here about properties included or not included in sewer districts. So, and to avoid vagaries, I would encourage people to get very precise on that. And the last point is, I'm glad that a concept of basically proportionality with your neighbors has been introduced here, talking about the heights versus your neighbor. I think that that's going to be very important as it appears like we're setting up for some form of a transit zone, whether it's a quarter or half acre, which would indicate some ability to broadly rezone the area, not just spot zoning, which I think is what some of us have been dealing with. So good concepts. Hopefully those comments are helpful as you look at the document. And thank you very much.
You can leave that on. Thank you.
Joe Paulo, 64 Arrowhead Trail. And Chairman Morrow, Vice Chairman Ross, members of the town council. Thank you for the opportunity to address the group tonight. There are many positive things that we can say about the draft of the P O C D. And one thought that I would like you to consider is that in the aggregate, I think the P O C D may be advocating too much change too quickly. Let me be specific. If you look at the draft document and you keyword in different terms, other than prepositions, other than the name of the town, the word that appears the most in the document is develop. It appears 325 times. In contrast, single-family homes only appears a dozen times. And so as you follow the idea of developing, and there's been a lot of discussion that about 50% of the zoning regulations of the town would need to be changed. In fact, 41 times in the P O C D, the document says, update the zoning regulations. So by definition, when the document is approved, there will be an inconsistency, a very significant inconsistency, between the zoning regulations and what's in the document. And this causes concern because I want to suggest to you that many of the new terms and new things that have been proposed in the P O C D are not things that we, certainly I, and I'm going to suggest many of you, may not be immediately familiar with, while external parties may be. And we really run the risk of being in situations where it will be difficult to accomplish our goals if we have some adversarial parties that don't necessarily share our, our points of view. Last week, we were told, I believe you were told, and I'm paraphrasing what the presenter said, that nothing would be mandatory and nothing would be required. If you keyword in mandatory and required, you will see quite a lot of things that pop up that in fact are required. On pages 48, 59, 70, 83, there's quite a lot of things that are required in the document, pages 58 and 59 again. And again, the issue here is not that I disagree with any of these statements are. Some of them might in fact be pretty good and that I would advocate. What I'm concerned with is that things from a process standpoint would be required that have not gone through the normal processes of town government. Let me try and put the pieces together in an example. Towards the end of the document, there's the section on the TOD area. I'll bet most of you, like I, assumed that T meant railroad. And it looks like it does in New Canaan. But when you look across the country at other communities, it could also mean heliport, it could also mean bus station. And I don't think any of us right now is advocating a heliport or a bus station. Also, the fact that New Canaan has two train stations. The document does not provide for any limitations to just one TOD. So when you read through the body text of that section, all of a sudden, everything is in the plural. There are hubs, there are municipalities plural, there are areas twice mentioned as plural. So that section, while it may be well-intended that we have one TOD, actually could very easily be construed to mean buy one, get one free. And Talmadge Hill would easily fall under that if there was a aggressive developer or somebody that wanted to go into that, that area. So I ask you to put that into consideration. Further, I believe last week, members that presented talked about the fact that the sewer systems, there was no plan to expand the sewer systems. And as a result of that, that would kind of constrain how housing development might occur because of the lack of access to the sewer. On page 59 of the plan, there's actually a statement that talks about buildout for a new sewer system. Update zoning reg, I'm sorry, complete a buildout of analysis of existing sewers specifically to guide P and Z in housing decisions. So again, we go back to the Talmadge Hill example where TOD is not limited to one area. And even the fact that the sewer, which might in fact keep TOD from going there, there's a plan to build it out, which seems rather surprising. Finally, I'd like to close on two quick points, which concern maps. If you look at the 2014 Plan, P O C D, there were, there was a map on the historic sites in the town. Included about 150 sites, 20 on the National Registry, 25 on the State Registry. The town had placked some. The new plan shows six. And of the six, one is the Merritt Parkway and one is the library, which is not, I think, I'm sorry, one is the Merritt Parkway. So we've gone from 135 down to five. And I asked the question, why? Again, so much change in a short period of time. Finally, I would close on one other map that I would like to call to your attention, which is the community facilities. In the 2014 Plan, there were six community facilities which are not listed in this plan. That's rather surprising, since the transfer station is listed as a community facility. The police departments are. The ones that were taken out were Erwin Park, Waviney Park, Mead Park, and all the Nature Center. They were all taken out as community facilities. I would ask the question, why? Why do we need to make that change? First of all, I think they would agree they're community facilities. And second, what value is it to do it? I don't know what somebody down the road might be planning to not have the name, the community facilities, but I am suggesting to you that these kind of changes, taking away all the historic sites, taking away the parks as community facilities, 325 references to development, changing 50% of the regulations, it's a lot of change quickly. I'm not opposed to any particular line item, but I am opposed to the aggregate. And I ask you to move forward in a much more measured and controlled fashion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sarah Pierce. Hi, my name is Sarah Pierce. I'm a budding neighbor to St. Luke's and we are appealing the recent decision, 729 Laurel Road, and we're appealing the recent decision regarding the 200-car parking structure. So parking structures are prohibited in residential zones in every town in the state, including New Canaan. So I take exception in this P O C D to the draft that they're going to continue to protect residential zoning, because this was a very large action that is an assault on residential zoning. They're dropping a stadium size, it's a 1.4-acre concrete structure in the middle of a four-acre zone. And between Grace Farms, which now sees 120,000 visitors a year, and then this megastructure, we have a very expansive, large, irregular concept of what it means to be protecting residential zoning. And so I would ask you, as an elected commission, you know, there's a lot at stake when an unelected commission starts working off very irregular definitions. There should be sort of an ordinary understanding of words and concepts in land use law. Per that, we've done a lot of research. You know, I talked to a town planner who, you know, she described our situation with St. Luke's as a reverse gentrification. What's happening is the school is buying up these properties with the intention of removing them from the tax base, because they want to make them a part of the campus. So they're removing them from the sort of the renovation lifecycle of a house. Instead of a family moving into a house, which would bring purchasing power to the town, visitors are coming with cars, but they're staying on campus all day. So it's not like they're helping the town at all, and then they leave. So what's happening is they're removing taxes, they're bringing cars. So they're taking resources, but they're not contributing anything. And this is why Greenwich, is what the town planner told me. Greenwich has been very aggressive in controlling private school expansion. Brunswick has four campuses. Actually, over the course of our hearings, they acquired, they started with three campuses, they acquired another campus. So like, while we're sitting here, we're signing these big checks to basically be using novel legal strategies to defend this really unprecedented action. Other towns have really ordinary ways of dealing with this, which is like, you don't pack too many people onto one campus. You have a lower campus and an upper campus. And you basically, you don't get in the business of lowering property values. We had, one of our neighbors had an offer pulled on his house after the commission approved the permit. Because it's like, it's never been done before in the state. People aren't sure what to expect. Even the construction of this is really wild, because there's just not the infrastructure in the neighborhood to handle that sort of, you know, building. So one of the things that we identified was that there is a lot of, there needs to be a lot of reform in the pre-development process. When you have employees working, you know, in a very lengthy capacity with an applicant, you know, the person who helps you study for the test can't be the one grading it. And so other towns, they separate the process, where if you're helping an applicant in pre-development, you're not advising the commission on the application when they're evaluating it. Because it leads to a very strange situation where I believe town employees are sincerely believe they're following the regulations. But what's actually happening is that they're parroting the applicant's legal strat, legal analysis back. And then it's an analysis that they were primed to, sometimes over the course of a year. So when new information enters during the hearing, it's really hard for them to incorporate it at the last minute, because they've just spent a year coming to understand a certain worldview regarding the legal analysis of an application. So I think the, the pre-development process needs to be reformed to bifurcate who's involved. The last thing is, you know, there's a line in the, the draft about assuring the public, you know, reassuring the public about their involvement. And I think this is really well-intentioned, but it needs to start with, the town needs to have a very clear way of communicating to the public who's in charge of certain action and discussion. So the P O C D should seek to clarify the executive's role in planned use, in land use planning. So by statute, the First Selectman cannot and should not attempt to influence the Planning and Zoning Commission, but they have a responsibility to oversee the actions of employees in their administration. So, you know, my lawyer tells me. So, you know, my lawyer tells me that the first selectman is the only person, like when an employee or, you know, an engineer takes a really unprecedented action or takes a really unprecedented understanding of a regulation, the town selectman is the only person who has an ability to kind of manage that situation. But in the same way that you can't have an elected official or you shouldn't have an elected official usurping random power, it also doesn't work for an elected official to say, you know what, I don't want to be involved. I'm just, you know, they, I shouldn't, this isn't, I'm going to leave this up to the town employees and they're, they're going to call it. Like there has to be some accountability. And I think that people are really entitled to know like who's in charge, who, you know, if the engineer and the town planner and the wetlands director report to the first selectman their decisions, like you should be able to lobby the first selectman on their decisions. And so I think the town, you know, has a responsibility to clarify who's in charge of those actions, especially when they've never been done before.
Rob Friar.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you about the P O C D. I'm Rob Friar, fourteen oh eight Ponys Ridge Road, and I am the current chairman of the New Canaan Land Trust. And I want to speak to you briefly about the town's land acquisition fund. And I'll do that by primarily summarizing a comment letter I've written to the, to Sarah Carey on this. High on the list of priorities identified by residents in the survey, in fact, it's number three on the list, is protection of the remaining open space in town. To achieve this requires opportunistic acquisition of open space that becomes available either by the town or private funding, which in practice means the New Canaan Land Trust. The town built a land acquisition fund of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars under the previous administration, which was awarded generously awarded to the New Canaan Land Trust as partial funding for the acquisition earlier this year of a property on Valley Road next to the group to serve as the land trust headquarters and to expand the land trust's existing brown preserve on Valley Road. So the town's fund is now depleted. Nothing was added to it in the last two budget cycles. From time to time, the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection invites applications for open space grants, so-called OWSA grants. A large grant of two point three million was recently awarded in support of the acquisition of eighty-five acres further east in Fairfield County in Monroe that became available for purchase and permanent protection. An opportunity of this magnitude in New Canaan is unlikely, but opportunities to buy either from a water company or from private owners do arise from time to time and could be considered for an OWSA grant. We have had at least one in the past ten years. However, the state requires that the buyer provides at least thirty-five percent of the purchase amount as these grants are capped at a maximum of sixty-five percent. The most likely sources of the thirty-five percent or whatever part is paid by the, by the purchaser would be either the land trust, which as a nonprofit organization has limited cash resources, or the town. And the town has nothing at present in the land acquisition fund, so we need to rebuild it. If failure to rebuild it would have, could have two consequences, losing an opportunity to acquire and protect open space that becomes available. And as I repeat, that's a priority under the results to the survey. And what would likely happen is a developer acquires it and develops the land. And secondly, significant state funding under this grant program, which could come New Canaan's way, you know, could be forgotten, leaving money on the table. Now, I will say that Kara has written back and pointed out that there's a recommended action to, and I quote, develop a sustainable funding mechanism for the open space acquisition fund, which is a good first step, but I leave it to Mr. Chairman and the rest of the elected officials around this table and border selectmen, as well as the border finance, that this is something that I feel and my colleagues on the land trust feel we really need to pursue. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Weingarten.
Hi, good evening. I just had a couple of comments, just going to make some overarching comments. I still am trying to go through most of it. There, I think it's really important when we look at this, we can think about New Canaan in relation to lower Fairfield County. There are, West Cog recently did a study, it's on their website, that talks about that even within Fairfield County, there are three different housing markets. There's the lower housing market that just goes up to like Weston and just anything that's close to the lower train, train stations and metro lines. And those are much more impacted in terms of demand, housing value, pricing, commuting, commuters who go into New York, which impacts and has a lot of impact on the valuations and what we're thinking about when we're describing our community. So I think it's important that we focus on that area because those are really the representative area. It's really not a fair assessment to do comparisons to state and what their levels of affordability are and what their housing values are because it's a totally different market because we are truly impacted by the fact that we are so close to metro New York area. Another thing that I found interesting was, I want to say page fourteen, it talks about the housing that's occupied versus, that's owned housing versus rental housing. And it breaks out very specifically the different types of housing when it comes to rental housing. And one of the things I wanted to make sure that we highlight as a community is something that we should be taking credit for, and that's the fact that we have a quite amount of single family attached. Those are row houses, those are townhomes. And so when you think about our community with the narrow roads that we have that often limit the ability for us to have on-street parking, townhomes is a way to have parking off-street, but it's, it's, it is gentle density and it's significant in our town. It represents over eight point three percent. And although there's a graphic in the, in the document, it doesn't actually mention that. It lops, lops it all into single family. And I'm very sensitive to how, you know, these comments about having over ninety percent single family and everybody's picturing a sprawling green lawn with two or four acres, and that's really not what we have. If anybody's been to New Canaan, you can see our downtown is full of, of that kind of gentle density townhomes. We, we're actually, we should be very proud of what we've done. And I think that should be featured more so within our report. So those, those are some of the main things. I, I echo the information about municipal design review. I recently listened to a discussion on the majority leaders housing roundtable and it, they came up on municipal design review. Only about one percent of land in Connecticut is subject, is able to be caught up in under that municipal design review. And it helps to protect our historic assets, our treasures that make our community so wonderful. So if you, so the only ones that can have this are state historic districts and village districts. So we should actually emphasize that and make sure that as we're considering the future and where we're headed and development, that we also look to make, ensure that we have our, our treasured assets protected within our community. And, and that's, that's about it for now. I, I will be adding more comments, but for now, I thought that, that's all I wanted to provide to you guys with. But really, it's important, I think, that we focus on making sure that our, our report really reflects what we have and what we face in, in our Derg area down here because of, we're so close to New York. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Kabukian. Did I say that correctly? Oh, great. And is it Hank? Okay. Well, that could be.
Thank you. And good evening. My name is Hake Kabukian and live at two ninety-three North Walton Road with my family. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, my family, and thirty-two neighbors who border St. Luke's School. We wanted to present our experience living in a residential zone near a large institution and how that relates to the two thousand fourteen and the two thousand twenty-four P O C D. As neighbors of St. Luke's, we participated in the two thousand fourteen P O C D since we were concerned that St. Luke's had changed the character of our neighborhood and would continue to change the residential character of where we lived. A common denominator we all experienced was increasing traffic, increasing building coverage, crowding of the campus, lights in the winter, campus noise, as well as the aggressive purchasing of adjacent properties, ostensibly for investment purposes. As we approached the drafters of the two thousand fourteen P O C D, these concerns, with these concerns, they were sensitive to the issues as neighbors, our issues as neighbors, and incorporated them into the P O C D for two thousand fourteen. That P O C D contains seven very explicit provisions to prevent the institutionalization to prevent the institutionalization of neighborhoods. Included were even recommendations for higher coverage requirements to allow bigger setbacks, not less coverage, which was recently granted to St. Luke's. Over the following decade, we felt our neighborhood would be protected by the town zoning regs and any shortcomings there would be covered by the clear provisions of the two thousand fourteen P O C D. In two thousand twenty-three, St. Luke's neighbors were stunned to learn that St. Luke's had applied for permission to build a two hundred car above-ground parking complex. We were told it was being built to address the traffic problem on North Walton Road, which I must point out was a problem that they created. When this application was considered by planning and zoning, we felt it was so out of line of all the values stressed in the two thousand fourteen P O C D, we were confident it would not gain approval. Our concerns were many, including further crowding of the campus, further stressing of a failed septic system, associated lights from the new parking complex, as well as two hundred headlights from LED lights from the cars, the related noise from the elevated field, extra traffic from anticipated expanded school and sports events. Equally concerning was if allowed to move forward, this project would require eliminating nearly a quarter acre of wetland setback by cutting down trees and extending the new turf field to the, within feet of the wetlands. There would be runoff from the expanded turf into the reservoir, which is just a short distance away. Testimony that any runoff would at least be in compliance with state guidelines was not reassuring given the antiquated nature of state guidelines and the constantly evolving science of forever chemicals, which would be running off the fields. When the project was approved by wetlands and planning zoning, we felt it was inconceivable that something so diametric to all the provisions of the two thousand fourteen P O C D to protect neighborhoods, the environment and open space could be allowed. Looking back, when we see what has transpired in our neighborhood as recently as two thousand twenty-three and earlier in two thousand twenty-four with the approval of the St. Luke's parking complex, with all its negative elements relating to the environment and neighbors, despite the very clear stance of the two thousand fourteen P O C D to protect neighborhoods, we were concerned there is nothing in the two thousand twenty-four P O C D, however well-intentioned, which will prevent this from happening again. We fear any future applicant from a well-funded institutional five oh one C three with budgets in the tens of millions of dollars will continue to have a distinct advantage getting approvals for applications with town bodies that may or may not be in the best interest of the neighborhoods and the environment. Thank you.
Ed Volmer.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm a forty-year member of New Canaan, that's here since nineteen eighty-three. The town obviously has, what has had this P O C D problem before. And what has probably, when I read the New Canaan has identified the downtown, has a priority for location of more housing and density. By focusing on efforts to enter the downtown, the town can shift development to the area of mixed use. This troubles me greatly because the town certainly is a busy town with lots of traffic. We have, we do, we don't, if it's going to be workforce housing or it's going to be senior housing, I don't quite understand why we would want to bring that all into downtown. We, we have a limited train service. We have no bus depot, we don't have bus service. The only fast way in and out of town is where the housing for senior, for low-income housing is over by one twenty-three, we place it in the right place. I fully support the concept of buying by the housing authority to buy Avalon and hopefully use it for senior housing, for affordable housing, and for workforce housing. And we now have this, we were able to, congratulations to the town for getting the, the moratorium for the next four years, but that's going to pass by very quickly. We, I hope you all support the concept that, that has been proposed to purchase Avalon. I know it's not in your purview, but I think everybody in town should be aware that this is a good idea. And I hope that the town can find a way to, to place this kind of housing in a right place. We have limited property available to us, but certainly we have some good ideas. But downtown, expanding downtown for multiple use, whether it's housing or, or whatever, just doesn't make any sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Fantastic.
No, is there anybody else?
Has their hand up online.
Did everybody who signed up have a chance to speak?
All right. Okay. All right, so that'll end our item, agenda item number two. Hearing, hearing from members of the public, as we all know for the record, anyone who wanted to speak had the opportunity to speak, and this was a publicly noticed meeting. So proceed forward for the rest of this evening and we will not go past nine o'clock. We are going to have a general discussion amongst the town council right now in light of the excellent comments we heard from the public. But I encourage a discussion, I'd like it to be number one, cordial and collegial and not talk over anybody. Number two, let's keep our, you know, comments targeted. I agree with Tom's statement from last week that, you know, not have a freewheeling kind of random discussion. If there are any particular issues to address or think that you need to address, then state them succinctly and let's move it along. It's not so much that we need to argue with each other, but let's let the public understand where we are at as, as a body, but we are an individuals, but we are a body. So to that extent, I'll open it up for some discussion and I'm particularly interested in thoughts on everyone here about what we heard. But before we do that, oh, and then I'll, I'll, I'll chime in after I listen to all of you. But I do want to note that we have Ira Bloom on Zoom. I invited him this evening, I wanted him to sit in. I had two particular questions that I wanted him to address and I'm not really, I don't think it's appropriate to start, you know, pounding Ira with, you know, any litany of questions and I don't want him staying on long because if he's charging us by the hour, Ira, I got to be mindful here. But anyway, Ira, so there's two questions I just wanted to ask you, and I think for the benefit of the town council and for the benefit of the public. Number one, in your, number one, I understand that the P O C D, the proposed P O C D has not been reviewed by your office, is that correct?
Mr. Morrow, can you hear me? Because I, I don't think you can see me, but can you hear me?
Yeah, we can barely hear you. What's going on there, Joe? Sorry, Bob. Ira.
Yes. Is that any better?
Yeah, marginally, it's just the best you can do. Hopefully no one's in your house and you can scream. Hopefully no one's in your house and you can scream and I don't think you're crazy, but to the best that you can, if you could just speak up, we can hear you, but it's, it's pretty muffled.
Okay. All right, well, I'll try to, I'll try to.
That's better.
I'll try to get a little closer here. Well, good evening, first of all, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Ira Bloom, town attorney. First question, no, we, we, our office has not specifically reviewed this draft. We have not been asked to review it. I, I will just tell you that we do not regularly for all our towns review the P O C draft. We do sometimes and sometimes we're asked to look at specific sections. If we do it, it's generally for, you know, for clarity issues to make sure that, you know, the words say what we think they should say. And we sometimes rewrite things here or there in certain sections. We don't, we don't get into the policy part of it. And in many cases, we, we are not asked to do it. Some towns work with consultants, land use consultants, some towns do it themselves. Sometimes we are asked to review it, but in this case, we have not been asked.
Right, it's just so I can understand that response, but there are times when you do review a draft for a town, is that correct?
We have, we have sometimes.
Right, okay. My second question is on the, just on process. You know, as, as you know, that the town council does play a role in the, this ultimate approval process for this plan by statute. We're not just some afterthought and there's specific statutory language in there. And I've, I've heard a few people say, well, you know, town council, you really don't have a role here, so kind of just rubber stamp it and move it along. And I'm paraphrasing that, but that's certainly not the case. We actually have a statutory role here and I know everyone's sitting up here is taking it extremely serious. With that said, knowing with the process and having, you know, extraordinary experience or historic experience with P O C Ds in our town and other towns. What is the process in terms of moving forward from here that if in an ultimate approval, meaning timeline? Now, I've heard that there's a, and maybe I'm mistaken, there's some drop dead date on approval by this month, but I don't think that's the case. What is your understanding, Ira?
Okay, so let me just go back. You certainly, the town council, the legislative body certainly has a role, an important role, and it's set by statute, statutes eight dash 23 and section H2 talks about the role of the town's legislative body, the town council here, of course, in New Canaan. And you are, you have the option really to offer comments or to endorse the entire draft plan, to endorse portions of it, to reject portions of it. That's all set forth in the statute. It is, it is advisory, meaning that really ultimately the planning and zoning commission can choose to accept or reject your comments or your, 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 your suggestions. With one caveat, it does say a little bit later in that, in the statute under I2, that if you do not endorse either the entire plan or a portion of the plan, it can still be approved by the commission, meaning the planning is on commission by a vote of not less than two thirds of the commission. So that's a, that's a condition if there's, if there's a reject, if you do not endorse, that's the wording, which I, I think is the equivalent of a rejection. Otherwise it's advisory, that's not to say it's unimportant, but it, but it's, it is advisory. Now, the timeline, it gets a little bit complicated, or maybe it's not that complicated. There are, there are, there are guidelines within the statute for how this process should work and how quickly it should, it should proceed. So for instance, the P and Z before is scheduled, it's a public hearing, which I, I think is at the end of September, if I understand that right. They had to, they had to provide you with the draft plan at least 65 days prior to their public hearing. So that was, that was how their date for their public hearings, and remember the P and Z does have to have public hearings. But that was, that was how that 65 days was calculated. So presumably they worked backwards and got you to report. There's another 65 day requirement to get, to get the draft to the, to the council of governments, the cog and the regional planning authorities. So that's another 65 days. So there's kind of a 65 day, you know, advisory, I'll say guideline to get this done. If it extended to 66 or seven or eight, there's no penalty associated with it. So there's no drop dead date and it's not etched in stone. But here's, here's the thing to remember that the P and Z under the statute, the same section I'm looking at, which is eight dash eight two. If they may render a decision on their plan without any report from you. So I, I hope they don't do that. I don't think they would do that. I don't recommend they do that, but the statute does contemplate that if they just don't get a report by delay or indifference or whatever it is, that's not going to happen here, they're free to go ahead and adopt the plan. So that creates a little bit of incentive to try to, try, try to do it. I, I think it's probably wise to try to stick to that 65 days. And if I, again, if I understand the dates correct, I think you, the council may have another meeting scheduled for this on, I think someone told me September 20. Hopefully after, I think that might be your third meeting, you'll, you'll be able to put together your recommendations and send it on and we can keep to the schedule.
Thank you, Ira. So again, so I can understand that, and I do, look, the goal here is for town council to wrap this up, you know, in due course and not delaying in getting to our ultimate conclusion. But what I at least understand then, because I'm, and again, maybe I thought I was something in my head, maybe I heard it the wrong way, but there's a statutory requirement that this document be adopted in, whether it be through a process of the town council approving it and then P and Z approving it, or P and Z overriding us, or P and Z just deciding to, you know, adopt it on their own. But there's no drop dead statutory deadline that says this document must be adopted by the end of September under penalty of some penalties. Is that correct or incorrect?
Yeah, no, that's largely correct. I mean, you know, there is that 10 year provision too. So that, that's, that's the expectation that it'll be done. And I don't know exactly when that expires, but even that, it, I think it results in a letter from the state if you go beyond the 10 years. So yes, what you're saying, Mike, is, is correct. There, there's no drop dead, etched in stone date that says it has to be done by, you know, this day or that day. But I, but I think there's a procedure in here which suggests that it'll, it'll be close to that 65 day period between when you receive the draft and when they're going to have their public hearing.
Understood, Ira. I appreciate that. By the way, just Ira, just to start from you, I apologize. I'm actually, I do want you to make, come up and give your statement. I, you know, I'm always looking to be expedient here and I totally forgot. Ira, thanks. If you could just hang for a little while, just a little bit, I promise to, you know, move you along.
Yeah, no, that's right.
John, Dan, Sarah, can you come on up? I am affording them a short opportunity of 10 minutes to provide some additional insight, given some concerns that the town council raised last week, and I think it's appropriate. You know, we do, sunlight is the best disinfectant, so I want to make sure everyone is seeing everything out in the open here. So thank you all for returning and let's, I'll give you guys 10 minutes because like I said, we're not going to go past nine, so go ahead.
We will need to share a screen at some point, so. Also with us is Robert Collins, who is one of the consultants.
Thank you.
Chairman Morrow and members of the town council. I am John Cris, a planning and zoning commissioner and chairman of the commission's plan of conservation and development subcommittee. During the useful conversation we had with members of the town council last week during the town council's special meeting on our P O C D draft, one concern seemed clear, whether the various action steps outlined in the P O C D were requirements or suggestions. Has been registered and I would like to explore it with you. As I stated last week, quote, "No town body will be required to implement a single item of this P O C D. It is not a dictat." Unquote. In addition, per state law, a municipality's P O C D is a plan, a series of ideas and suggestions, and not a list of requirements. Furthermore, the first paragraph on page three of the P O C D draft states, quote, "The P O C D presents existing conditions data, incorporates local knowledge and input, community engagement activities, excuse me, engagement initiatives, and establishes a future land use plan and recommends next steps, policies and actions to create an implementation roadmap and timeline for community use. Please note use of the word verb recommends." In addition, page 44 outlines the structure of the theme chapters and labels the actions as recommended actions. Note that this discussion on page 44 sets the stage and establishes core foundations for the strategies, policies and actions that follow. In order to ensure that there is no confusion or inference that any of these strategies, policies and actions is required of any town body, I intend to make the following edit recommendations to our P O C D subcommittee as we craft a final draft for submission to the full planning and zoning commission. Okay, you can see up there in your screen. So if you look at goal introduction. Within each community theme, the chapter introduces specific recommended, new word to be inserted, goals supported by community context and analysis. Under recommended strategies and policies, also notice the word recommended, within each recommended goal. The chapter lists potential strategies, policies and actions that New Canaan can, if it chooses to employ to achieve each goal. There's the box. Yeah, there's the box there. Policy, which is a definition here, a guiding statement for potential decision making within the context of a suggested strategy. And next. These elements collectively form New Canaan's implementation plan, C, appendix C. Implementation plan identifies suggested responsible entities and timeframes, dropping the word expected, for each recommended action, serving as a roadmap to assess the town's progress towards meeting its recommended goals over the next decade. Though the recommended, there's that word again, strategies, policies and actions that follow are stated in the accusative case. It is my belief that this abundance of additional and very specific explanatory verbiage will later rest any inference that any town body is required to follow this plan, although we recommend the P O C D's strategies, policies and actions to everyone's closest attention. Furthermore, to reemphasize these points, I intend to advocate adding the following paragraphs to introduce the implementation plan tables at the end of the P O C D. Read them to you, they're up on the screen. The following tables summarize the goals, strategies, policies and actions suggested in chapters four through seven of this plan of conservation development and identify both proposed lead and support entities to be responsible for each recommended actions implementation and the recommended timeframes for implementation. Next paragraph. New Canaan's ability to implement these proposed actions is not addressed within these tables. The town will need to carefully consider its capacity to implement the various proposed actions, including budgetary, Mr. Chairman, you mentioned that, and staffing needs and unplanned emergent priorities. Go, but anyone? Each recommended policy and action was carefully vetted through community engagements. However, New Canaan should be mindful of public support and our opposition when making decisions about implementation. As a result of these considerations, it is unlikely that all proposed actions will be pursued and/or completed within the 10 year life of this P O C D. In the event that some actions are not pursued and/or completed within the next 10 years, the town might wish to consider them for inclusion in future P O C Ds. In addition, we've scanned the P O C D draft and the word shall appears only once on page 92, and I intend to recommend changing this to May. Chairman Morrow, please think of these anticipated changes as belts and suspenders. Finally, I also intend to recommend changing the timelines and implementation table to short, medium and long, dropping specific years to simplify it and enhance flexibility. We have stated and restated during this intense, nearly year-long P O C D crafting process that we welcome public input. We mean it. We thank the town council for the ideas they have already shared. And welcome any further suggestions on how this P O C D draft can be strengthened to the benefit of all in our community. I remind everyone that this public comment period remains open through September 20. If you have ideas to share, please do so. To share them is either tonight in this public forum, which has occurred, or by emailing them to Sarah Carey in Town Hall or contact information is on the town's website under planning and zoning. Chairman Morrow, thank you for holding this public comment hearing on the P O C D. I am confident that we will continue to benefit from the public's ideas. It is a privilege to continue to serve the people of New Canaan. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, without, is there anything else from you all? Is that it?
Chairman Radman? Like just, just a couple of things that were brought up. This is Dan Radman, chairman of planning and zoning commission. Again, thank you everyone on, on town council for. My mic is on.
Bring it closer.
I can hear myself echoing already, so.
Okay.
Okay. I just wanted to thank town council for your careful consideration of the draft. We've put a lot of work and effort into this one, along with our consultants over the last year, multiple public meetings for input and public contribution to various aspects of the P O C D. We believe we've listened, we've heard, we've incorporated and we've done our best to update the P O C D as mandated by the state so that it is as accurate and reflective of the town's goals for the next 10 years. I heard a couple of things from various people that spoke tonight and we, you know, I've been taking notes all night, we have heard everyone. If there's any questions by the town council, a few people spoke to previous and current applications that were heard or approved or denied, or whatever the case may be by P and Z, all I can say is I would recommend the town council go back and listen to those applications, listen to those meetings, listen to our deliberations and our ruling. It'll explain why we did what we did. That's all I can really say about those. One person did bring up a question as to why we're doing the P O C D before the zoning change. We've been talking about a zoning amendment for the last few years, actually. And in my 14 years on planning and zoning, we've, we continually come up with conflicts of interpretation, gray areas within our current zoning code, which was most holistically updated in 2007. Since then, there's been a few amendments here and there, but it needs a thorough go through as well as some revisions. I would not agree that someone mentioned 40 or 50% of it has to be revised. I don't think that's an accurate number. I think there's a lot of it that has to be looked at and portions of it will be revised, no doubt, with the advice of our council guiding us through that. But there is enough gray area within the current zoning code that we need to do that over the next couple of years. That could not happen before our P O C D. I think the natural progression was to establish the P O C D first and then move into a zoning regulation amendment and, and updates as required. With the P O C D guiding. with the P O C D guiding us as necessary. So with that, I think the, the input we've gotten from the Town Council, from the public, all of that has helped us to further refine this, and we continue to refine that. We talked about deadlines. I'll let Sarah speak to the exact deadlines. Ira did touch on the sixty-five day and deadline. There are specific dates associated with that. We've had a schedule of how to get through the year of development on the P O C D in order to meet the end-of-year deadline by the state. We do have some flexibility in there. If the Town Council needs extra days or an extra meeting, I don't think anyone's going to be opposed to that. We're looking for that contribution. But we definitely don't want to delay this for months on end for additional public hearings because we've already done the public hearings. So with that, again, thank you for your time. I thank the public's input. I think everyone here was, that spoke tonight, was was helpful, informational. Definitely heard, we listened and we heard. And some of those comments may inform your decisions as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead, please.
Two brief questions, and they're just in response to things I heard today, just that I just thought I could ask you, and if it's too in the weeds, we, you can bypass it, but when Giacomo Landy was speaking, he referenced a sentence, like a very specific sentence he wanted removed about the sewer, the statutory capacity of the sewers. I just, for my edification, I couldn't access that quick enough, what, what he was talking about.
Sure, so I don't remember the exact page number, but in our chapter two, which is essentially our existing conditions chapter, we talk about, you know, existing infrastructure in the town, and we reference a two thousand and twenty-one study that was completed by A E Com that discussed the capacity, available capacity as of two thousand and twenty-one of the sewer system, and we have received other comments requesting to remove that sentence, so that is something the subcommittee will consider. It's just when we're on the public, while we're in the sixty-five day period, our consultant has advised that we should not be changing the plan. Like, we can, you know, take in all those comments, we just can't change it right now.
I, I, I didn't quite understand, why have you been asked to remove that particular sentence? Like, what, what is?
So there's, there is concern about advertising the availability left in the sewer system capacity when it's taken out of context, you know, as Giacomo had alluded to.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I can add a little bit to that. The state mandates that we have a certain amount of surplus or spare capacity in our sewer system, which, as of the two thousand and twenty-one report, we do. But that spare capacity could always be misconstrued as additional capacity, meaning it's not the safety factor, it's just additional capacity. So we, we don't want to lead anyone on with the fact, with, with information that might not be accurate to their interpretation.
Very helpful, thank you. I just, that clarified it. And, and the other brief question I had, and again, if this isn't the place to do, it's just, I, I was curious your reaction, just because several of us on the, you know, the Town Council, obviously, in the bylaws and ordinance meeting this summer, you know, we had the whole discussion about the sidewalks. So, so I'm assuming you created a lot of the language about it prior to that vote. Are you, do you feel any differently now that, you know?
Our, our role on the P N C, as well as on the, on the P N C, as well as the P O C D Subcommittee, we are not mandating sidewalks. We are not stating who's to pay for them, how they're going to be paid, and who's to maintain them. Our recommendation is strictly that. It's the planning and development side of, is there a potential, and it's, it's a recommendation to study whether there's a potential need for additional sidewalks in town? How that happens would be a completely separate process in the future, different committees. It would have to go through you guys. It would have to go through the Finance Commission. It would have to go through the First Selectman's Office. A lot of decision-makers way above our pay grade, quite frankly, to make the decision of where and if any additional sidewalks will go into town and who would maintain them.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is how I kind of see things, and I'll open it up to general discussion. I think there's a process kind of basket issue that maybe some people have wanted to discuss, and I think there's more of the substantive components of what's in the document. On the process side, again, as I said, you know, I think the P O C D, all who were involved have done exactly what they were asked to do. They have a process and they follow it. They've done, you know, an excellent job doing what they're supposed to do. We can all disagree about the contents, but I think the execution of their process was, you know, done in due course and deliberate. I think some of us, and I know I do, on the process, I think that there needs to be a reexamination of that process. It's beyond your purview. It's for other people in town to chat about. So that's one thing. And then on the substance side, you know, with respect to moving forward in the next, you know, forty or so minutes we have left here, because I think it's pretty obvious we're not having a vote tonight on this document. And we will have additional discussion in our next hearing, a next meeting that we'll have in a couple of weeks, and we'll talk about that process amongst the Town Council. But on the substance side, as we open it up, like I said earlier, and again, in agreement with Tom, you know, it's, I don't think it's helpful to have a free will and, well, you know, kind of random opinionation, opinion, opining on what's in the document. If you have specific issues, say, here's what I particularly have an issue with. Like, I identified the fire department last week. I, I don't think it's appropriate to have that in this document because, yes, I get there's a study component, and, you know, maybe we can consider it, but this is a document that will be pointed to by people on a lot of different sides and say, well, you know, it's in this document, and it's an expression of a desire to potentially move in that direction. Whether it ultimately happens is a separate story, but it's an intention of a desire to move in a certain direction. You'll do your analysis and you'll move forward. I think even initiating the, let's potentially move in that way is an issue for me with respect to a fire department. And also the issue raised by Mr. Landy about the sewer system. So with that said.
Could I speak to that one second? So that particular issue, that was a recommendation by the Fire Marshal, and it spoke specifically to the remoteness of certain regions within the town and the response time from the fire department. It would be, it would be irresponsible of us as a P O C D not to include that information from the fire professional in town as to what a potential solution in the future could be. We're not mandating it, again, to Mr. Chris's point, we're not mandating it, we're not requiring it. We're just saying that it was brought up as a potential issue, and they could be studied in the future.
I totally understand that. And again, that's why the Town Council has a statutory process in place and the authority to, you know, either adopt, adopt this document in its entirety, or reject it in its entirety, or adopt it in an amended form. You know, with respect to the fire department, and I've been on Town Council for seven years now, and we address our capital plan, that issue's never come up. Not to say it wasn't, and, you know, and, and there may very well be good reasons to, but like I said, you guys move forward with your process, and you laid it out, and it's up to us to have our discussion and make recommendations in order for us to get to a point where, you know, we can approve it or at least express our ultimate desire one way or the other. So with that said.
Just to piggyback on what you were just saying, I think that we as a, as a body also need to come up with a game plan or some rules about what gets recommended for amendments or or comments, because if it's just individuals firing it off, and it's not a consensus from our body that these are the things that we want to see changed, amended, proposed, I think that's problematic, because there are probably some edits that somebody would make here that I would, I might disagree with. And the majority of people might disagree with. So if we're going to take any action, like endorse or reject in whole or in part, I think that there needs to be a consensus on what we're voting on and the specific comments and suggestions.
And, and to that point, we would appreciate a reconciled, concise, single list of recommendations and comments from the Town Council, rather than, you know, twelve different emails and list of questions that might be, in some cases, were duplicative, might be redundant, might not be applicable, right? So we'll leave it up to you guys to develop that list and come back to us, because we do want to hear it. We do want to listen. We do want to accommodate.
I just think, like, for us, for, for our purposes too, I do think that it, it's better that it's not individual recommendations that we as a deliberative body come up with what we think a majority of us think should, should happen.
Agreed.
Comment on that. I don't see it that way. I think there's a, a sort of a pecking order of ranking of what we could do. We could carve out certain aspects of the report and just reject them. And of course, there's a process that follows that. We could, we could have comments on individual issues, specific issues that, that are voted for and approved by the Town Council as a body. And and we could simply, as citizens, submit individual comments that have as much value as anybody else that's committing, that's commenting in the process. And, and the reason I, I point that out is that, and we, we should be clear as to which comments are just from individuals and which are from the Town Council. But to elevate from the individual comments to comments of the Town Council is going to take a process of consideration and debate.
I completely agree.
And I think, and I think the, the comments have to be very specific, grounded in the text, so it's very understandable what we're, what we're prescribing. So I think, I think there are levels at which we could react, and as you go up that declension of levels, more time, the more Town Council meetings and more Town Council time would be involved.
I, I understand that, but I do think as the body that is supposed to accept or reject in whole or in part, we have a responsibility, aside from, of course, as a, as a resident, you're, obviously, you can send in any comment you want, right? And you all would consider it, and you considered it during the survey period, and you would consider it during the, your public hearings. But I do think as the deliberative body that's supposed to take particular actions, we should look at suggestions from individual members from the perspective of, if this edit isn't made, am I willing to vote to reject this section? Or am I willing to accept this section even if that suggestion isn't taken? And I think that it, it's, that's our responsibility here. I mean, that, to me, is our responsibility. And what you do as a resident outside of your membership on this deliberative body is separate in part.
There is a world in which we don't reject anything. We just, we just comment.
Yes, I exist in that world.
Maria, yeah, please.
Here's the third option. I think here all the comments, I, I think it would be nearly impossible to get us all to agree on every single edit, but I think we should compile all our questions and issues, and the committee can decide, like what you did after our last meeting, the change you made, I think, is, is perfect. So I think we convey the issues, and then based on what you do, you come back and tell us, and then we decide. Do we like it the way it is with whatever issues were changed?
Do we have a list of issues that were brought up?
Tonight, I do. I mean, I have.
Had asked to collect them by Tuesday and the business, and I haven't seen.
I don't think, I don't know who, if anyone answered.
Can I?
Yes, no, there was an email, but I haven't received anything from the committee at large.
Except for me.
And.
That was in the previous. There was one subsequent email after our last.
I answered that one too, but it's not important.
I'd like to just concur that I, I agree with what Maria said. I think that's a great approach, rather than going, voting on every single edit. And I think you did a great job in terms of changing things already, in turn, you know, to say recommended as opposed to mandated. So I think that you are listening. So I, I think that's a way for all of us to be heard individually, and we all have different concerns, so.
Rita.
So I think it's a great discussion, by the way. And I really, you guys, what a job you're doing and all the input you're, you're pulling in. I really commend you. But I guess my thing is, what if our comments conflict? And so I'm just curious how you weigh, because you've been getting, you've been, you know, getting this input from the community all along, and now we're at the end. Would you weigh these comments more or less? How are you weighing them against each other? Like, so I, I'm just, how do you decide? What, and what's like comments to?
They haven't seen them yet.
Wanted to add to that, and this is in the form of, thank you, Mike, sorry, in the form of a question. So the, once the plan was put together, it looked like there was a workshop on May twentieth and then a follow-up survey. Has anyone else been asked to give input on the finalized plan? Because my concern is maybe people, not enough people have, so. So I know you, you gathered so much input prior to developing it, but I'm wondering, once it's in writing and it's a finalized plan, you know, have business owners seen it? Have, you know, families, parents, landlords?
Yeah, I can try that. Well, you have a publicly noticed hearing here. There was another one before this, which was publicly noticed. It's been noticed, it's been also noted in the press, various press in, in New Canaan. It was mentioned in the, I believe, the First Selectman's Newsletter. It was also posted to the Town Website the same night you, you received it as a draft.
Link, because it sounds like forty-five people actually were asked to give an opinion on, give their feedback on the plan. So in that May twentieth follow-up survey.
People, in the various surveys, there's a tell me more section, for lack of a better term, and if people wish to comment, they may do so. If they don't, they don't have to. They may just check the box. I like it, I sort of like it, I don't know, whatever, whatever the answer is. And that is up to the person filling that, filling it out. And some people were just completing the form as is without comments. Some included comments. And it's really up to the resident to decide what he or she wants to do in that case. So we're not directing them. We're saying, doors open. If you wish to comment, you may do so. If you want to send us something longer, you can send it to Ms. Carey. It's always noticed that you can do so. So there have been any number of venues available to residents and other interested parties to comment. And really, it's, it's, the ball's in their court to comment.
But so who, who, who created that workshop? I, I think there were like fifty members.
Fair enough. There were, there were, my memory, there were five distinct workshops. There was a kickoff workshop at Lapham, which we had.
I'm really referring to after the plan's done, like the, the implementation plan is now something to be read and.
Plan was done. Well, we've had all of the P O C D Subcommittee meetings are public, and people have commented, and people can come and attend if, if they wish to, and we've had any number of those. I want to reiterate, as I did last time, is that unlike how some things are done in Hartford, we don't do things that dead of night. Every change in every meeting we have is publicly noticed. It is specifically stated exactly what the issues are and what's going to be discussed. All meetings are public. We cannot make any decisions until we've had public hearings. That's it. There's no way around it. And the items that Planning and Zoning Commission, our Planning Commissioner, Planning and Zoning Commission Chairman Radman has mentioned about the potential of changing, revisiting some of the zoning rules, go through the exact same process. So people have views. Come and talk to us. We want to hear it. And so there's been any number, there are any number of options for people to speak specifically to the sixty-five day period after our P O C D draft was quote substantially complete. I think that's the legal term, which is when it kicked in for the review period for the Town Council. Again, it was, it was noticed by your two meetings, the the First Selectman mentioned it in the newsletter, so it's been broad, broadly broadcasted. I don't really know what else to tell you, except that we have gone out of our way to try to solicit input, and the input levels we've had have been extraordinarily strong. So we welcome more, all the way until the final decision by the Planning and Zoning Commission, which would be chaired by Mr. Radman, is another public hearing, and people can speak there too. And when we are, have a P O C D meeting, which I anticipate we will have probably later in this month, early next month, we're working on a date. It hasn't been set yet. That's another opportunity for coming, people to come to speak to us as we go through all of these comments. We're, we're trying our hardest to generate as much public input as possible, because we really mean it when we say we want public input.
John, thank you. Penny, please.
Yeah, I, I think we actually have an example of an outside of New Canaan body going through literally sentence by sentence by. body, uh, going through literally sentence by sentence by sentence. And, and we all got the document today and you, uh, send your package too, uh, from the, um, uh, Preservation Alliance. And that, it came about because as I was going through the implementation, I had some questions myself that actually needed, um, an answer by those people who are intimately involved in the topic. And, um, you guys have, you know, vast knowledge, but you don't have knowledge on absolutely everything and the details of everything. So I hope you do go to those organizations, you know, who are more involved in, um, the, the particular topic. And I think you'll see, uh, you know, page nine, page 11, page 12, or 13 of, of topics that in the implementation had some question, um, or a rewording, um, that might be more effectively, you know, stated.
Can I speak to that? So as, as many of you on the commission know, I'm a, a huge proponent of preservation in this town. I was a big supporter of keeping the, uh, the library, the 1913. And, um, not a huge fan of what's happened to it, right? Simply leave it there. We had a specific workshop on preservation as part of the P O C D process. There was no one from Preservation Alliance that attended. It was open, it was publicly noticed. There were other people there that spoke to it. Um, but I, I'll be honest, I was a little disappointed that Preservation Alliance didn't have representation there.
Well, maybe it's because I, I'm, my understanding is they had presented some written commentary and didn't feel they needed to be. I don't know, I'm not, I, I'm not, you know, that involved, but, but I, but I hope, hope, hope we don't then say because they weren't there, that these comments that have been.
Not at all. We're actually happy to see the letter, this was from dated today, uh, uh, from Neely Banks, Stinchcomb. We're happy to see these because we will go through these tooth and nail and, and incorporate what we can.
Perfect.
That is a critical element to this town is the preservation of our historical components. Both historical meaning, you know, colonial as well as midcenturies, right? Um, as many of you know, I'm an architect, so I'm a big supporter of that. Um, but, uh, we'll be happy to incorporate as much, if not all, of what's in here.
Have another, just a tiny little follow-up to the discussion with Ira Bloom. He said, in the past, the lawyers have not previewed the P O C D. I'm wondering, since perhaps the environment in the world has changed a little in the past 10 years, that we may be living in a more litigious, um, environment, that it might be wise for us to be out ahead of any possible problems by having the lawyers go through this and look at things like, John, you just said, there's only one shell. But make sure that the wording that can only be understood by a lawyer, perhaps, um, you, you shake your head, no. But, but, but perhaps they've had, you know, experiences with the wording of things that then have, uh, tripped up, uh, a community. And so since we're in a different environment, that it would be wise of us to get out ahead of it and have our lawyers read this document for those kinds of possibilities.
So I've been handed the mo, um, so I, I would say to that, if that's, um, if that's a recommendation, town council, um, decides that they desire for the commission to look into, I, I would leave that up to them to determine if it's appropriate or not. Um, but I will add, it's, it's interesting. So I decided today to go back to the 2014 minutes of town council and they held their public hearing in 2014 just because I, I wanted to see the parallels or lack of parallels. And this exact topic came up and, um, so you know.
Well, as many others.
So, you know, it's, it's good to know things haven't changed too much. Um, but so it was interesting, um, chair, previous chairman, John Goodwin, um, had made a statement in those minutes, which are in the minutes. Um, and essentially says that we've had, um, you know, a strong planning background since the 1950s with long range, long range planning going back to that 1950 time period. And we've never really had a town attorney review our plans and we've never really been challenged by the, like those plans have never really been challenged. So, you know, in 2014, they didn't feel the need to do that. I'm, I'm not saying they do or don't feel the need to do that. It was just interesting that it's come up.
Well, I could give you an example of T O D, right? We say we are going to be, I can't remember the exact wording, studying it, reviewing it, whatever. We're not saying we are going to. But if we have the slightest little opening that New Canaan is going to do it, you know doggone well, there are going to be people in Hartford who are going to come flying right down all over us, so.
The 24, if you look through the 2014 P O C D, there was an item in there for, I think it was a T D D transit.
P D D plan.
P D D.
Plan Development District.
District. And subsequent to that, um, Steve Kleppen, one of our previous planners, there was an exercise to look at how to develop the lumberyard lot as well as the acne parking lot and the, um, PetSmart, uh, area that never went anywhere. There was a consultant brought on board, there were studies done, there were renderings done, there was an analysis done. But it, quite frankly, it died on the vine. So it doesn't mean that we haven't been down that road before. It's a worthwhile exercise to investigate that. Because again, as mentioned during the previous meeting, we want to be the, uh, we want to control our destiny in this town.
Right.
We want to be ahead of it regardless of what Hartford is doing. We know what the strategies of Hartford and the federal government overall, for all of you who've been listening to the news about what's being planned. Um, we want to be ahead of it and we want to consider we're all, the elephant, there's, the elephant in the room is we all know where the strategic large pieces of public property and developable property in town are. Um, two of which I just mentioned, right? So we, as a, as a planning and zoning commission and a P O C D commission, we want to be ahead of it and try and be able to steer and guide and create guardrails for the development of those areas so that we're not force-fed what the state might want to do. We might not be successful, there's no promises, right? Um, state can always overrule things like 830G shows us. Um, but we want to be proactive and diligent and, uh, future-proofing for it.
So further on that, uh, you know, we were ahead of the curve on ADUs or accessory dwelling units, sort of granny flats. And because we already had rules on this, the rules that the state put down, we got out of because we already had something. And so to the extent that model is used for a T O D or something else, if we have that arrow in our quiver, we're, we're already ahead, a couple of steps ahead of the game. And, um, you know, again, I, last time I was here, uh, I mentioned playing chess, you know, you have to think a couple of moves deep here. And we're trying to do that. Uh, as, as Chairman Radman mentioned, it doesn't mean you're necessary, we're necessarily going to do something, but it's, it's useful to have it available and as an issue for us to potentially discuss. That's all.
Read this question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bring that up, just curious, I, I can restate it, but if you remember it.
They're probably better suited to answer them.
You can restate it.
Sure. So you spent a lot of time getting a lot of input from a lot of different people, um, throughout that, gosh, tons of input. And what I was, my question was, is after we then weigh in again and again and again, how are you weighing the information you've gotten all along to what we're stating now, to who is stating it? Like, how are you deciding what should be in and shouldn't?
Personal opinion. Uh, I, I take each idea and comment on its own merits. I don't necessarily want to say that because so-and-so said it, it's sort of worth more than what someone else said. You know, I just remember the mouths of babes and infants kind of thing. And so I want to ensure that each comment can stand or fall on its own merits. And we, we've been faced with the task of having diametrically opposed suggestions from people. Oh, you know, we don't want any to develop anywhere. Uh, sort of a banana type approach, build absolutely nothing anywhere near anyone. Well, that's probably not, not going to go. Uh, or we want more, uh, develop more housing downtown, could be more senior housing. Many people have asked for that. And so it's really a, try to strike a, an appropriate balance and maybe a bit more art than science, frankly. But, uh, we have many constituencies, constituencies in town. We have, you know, larger families, we have new families looking for maybe entry-level housing. We have elderly who want different types of housing. And some elderly housing consists of, you know, five-bedroom houses on Canoe Hill Road. And sometimes it consists of a two-bedroom condo somewhere. Different people have different views. There's been a, um, increase in popularity in housing in the, um, call it central business district. We've, any number of new, uh, residential dwellings have been built. Others will likely happen there. In fact, there's an application coming for more. I can't comment on it because it's an application, but it's an application. You can look it up yourself. Uh, and many people found this very, very, um, positive. And I think the, um, mixed housing developments we've had have been pretty successful. You look at, um, uh, the Forest Street one where there used to be the motorcycle dealership and a parking lot. Well, now we have a, I think a very nice building. Uh, we had that Bank of America branch with the drive-through at the corner of Locust and Forest that was torn down. And we have five, I think, very nice, uh, town homes and some condos and retail. There have been others, we look on Cross Street and Viti Street. There are apartments and condos which, uh, have been built with grade retail or, or medical version of, of retail, which I think had been, been popular. And, and so there is a, a demand for that. Uh, in particular in Cross and Viti, um, we've had study, various studies over the years. There's a lot of open space and a lot of parking lots and so forth, and many older buildings. You know, where, what's the future of that? One might think that there will be more development there. And perhaps because there's a very large footprint and as I recall, a lot of it's owned by one person. You know, we'll see what happens. Uh, we want to be prepared for all this and think it through now, not only on the types of buildings that can go there, but also design of buildings, which in a T O D can set up design guidelines. We already have design guidelines for the central business district. Uh, and others can be created too. Uh, which I think the commission, Mr. Chairman, has been very supportive of design guidelines. And we want things to look nice. You know, we spend hours talking about, well, you know, you should put fieldstone there as opposed to something else because people like looking at fieldstone and it's a traditional building product. So it's a long answer to a short question, but, uh, the, the short answer for me is that, uh, I want, I take, you, you try to do it as blind as possible, really. You want, is this a good idea? And if it's a good idea, you know, we'll use it. If it isn't, well, maybe, or maybe less a good idea, we won't.
I'm hearing you want to try to strike a balance and it's kind of a, it's art, it's pretty much art as well as science.
We have to strike balances all the time, so.
Just to add to what Mr., try and answer your question, um, maybe from a different angle. The Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as the P O C, something we, we work as a commission as a team in the same way that all of you on the town council bring different skillsets, different backgrounds, different experience to the town council to represent the people of New Canaan in your decision-making. There's no single person on the town council that's making a specific decision. You're all going to, just as we've been discussing, the list of recommendations or advisory comments that you're going to put together for us on the P O C D. You all deliberate that and discuss it and come up with a consensus as a team of what those issues are that will come back to us. We on the P and Z commission also, we may not be elected officials, we are appointed, but we all come to it with just as much vigor and dedication as you guys do for the town council. Um, we all, all come from different backgrounds. We have architects, we have attorneys, we have city planners, um, who, who, you know, licensed city planners and town planners. Um, we have, um, local designers, we have real estate agents, we have commissioners who've been on other commissions and town council, planning and zoning, parks and rec, um, parking commission, all of whom have spent years, um, on various commissions in town and dedication to the town and have ended up on P and Z to help steer us through the, the years. So we as a commission function as a team, discuss the items and agree or disagree whether to include them or not include them based on that experience and that skillset. Hopefully that answers it.
No, no, it does, it does. It, it really solidifies in my mind what this document really is versus what I think some people may be construing it as. Like, I like the, the new wording, which is recommended and, you know, suggestions. And, um, it's much more of an aspirational, like, hey, this could be something. It's not a, this is what we absolutely are required.
Correct.
Yeah, expecting you to do. It's just, it's just confirming what I was thinking. Thank you.
Please, thank you.
Several concerns or testimonies about St. Luke's development. And I just was curious, where do you address that? Is that addressed in the P and Z meetings or where are, where are those concerns? Um, you know, were they discussed and addressed? Because it, it doesn't seem like it's in the P O C D document itself, so.
What I would, because there is an appeal process going on with St. Luke's right now, I would just, as I mentioned in the beginning of our meeting this evening, I would refer you back to the hearing that we had, uh, the deliberations, the discussion and the ruling that we came up with for that. Um, that should be self-explanatory, what, what our position was on it.
Okay. And, and, um, the other question was about the maps. There seems to be some inconsistencies, um, that some people pointed out in the sewer maps and the historical sites. So just can you explain, um, you know, why people are, because that could clear up some confusion as to how things have changed.
The maps, um, in this plan are all illustrative. They're not meant to make decisions off of whatsoever. And, um, we plan to go back into the document to make sure there's a disclaimer to make that clear because no decisions should be made based on these maps because they're not meant to be a hundred percent accurate. With the sewer map, I don't know off the top of my head what the inconsistencies may or may not be. So, um, we will look into that to understand what exactly the concern is. Um, relating specifically to the, um, map with the historic districts. When myself and the consultant team went and reviewed the 2014 maps to recreate them for now, we, um, and the consultant team, we were not able to identify easily or accurately what all the historic points were on that map. And rather than try to regurgitate that map and omit something or incorrectly add something, we decided to just keep it very general and just stick to the broad areas of New Canaan that had historic things. But I, um, noted in our, one of the letters we received from the Preservation Alliance today that they listed all of those addresses for us. So, um, I was going to talk with the consultant later to see if we're comfortable adding those onto the map now that we have that data readily available. So that's that map. Um, was there another one or was it just those two?
Those two in particular.
Okay.
Yeah. So when someone is saying there's, something is completely off and that's not necessarily true in terms of how something has changed over the last four years. Yeah.
At, at the risk of pushing us ever closer to nine o'clock, first of all, I want to say. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm going to be short. This is not like my last time. I, I want to thank you, Commissioner Chris, for, uh, showing us the wording changes in terms of recommended and suggestions. And I think that's, that's really, really important. Yeah, and I did make some comments back to Christina about, I went through and looked at all 186 action steps and everywhere I saw a verb, I made some recommendations and to soften that, so it wasn't so much of an action word as a consider doing this or think about doing that. So I, I've made those comments. And I think what you suggested in your changes goes along that direction. And, and I will just say what, what I said at the last time the town council gathered to discuss this. At the front end of this document, it says the town may use this in planning, in thinking about, in doing. There is not one mandated requirement that the town do anything in all hundred-plus pages of this document. And we all need to keep that in mind. We need to trust that the Planning and Zoning Commission is comprised of individuals who care as deeply and as much about responsible development and keeping New Canaan what it is that we love as we do. And I'm, I'm going to trust that because I hope you all have all of that in mind. And I want to just again congratulate you on the effort that went into this and, um, just keep us all in, in that mindset. Thank you.
So we're getting close now to the end of the show. Um, so let's just talk process. So Maria, yes?
One last point.
Is it about the cost? All right, yeah, I, I don't, I raised the issue, but I really don't want to start getting deep, but we can do that later.
All right, this will be real quick.
Go ahead.
All right. I, I did, I think I heard the 40% of those zoning regulations would be changed. I thought it was at a Board of Selectmen meeting.
I can speak to that. You want me to really quickly? It's, it's 45% of the action steps, so the 186 will be or can be addressed through a zoning regulation update. It's not that 50% of the regs will change, it's that 45% of the plan.
But we don't really know. But we don't really know how many of the regs. Yeah. So that's an unknown. So, you know, my point, what I really want to say is growing up in this area, I've been in this in this direct area for a lot of years. I'm not going to say how long and one more this month. So there's been a lot of development, you know, change over time. And I do appreciate the guardrails that you're building into this plan. I do think, you know, I do agree with some of the speakers, you know, the one that said things seem to be, this sets the groundwork for moving very fast. And I like the term gentle development. I really like that term. One thing that I think rather than go down this road where we have, you know, we might be doing so much so fast in an effort to really reflect. And in addition to what you said, these are recommendations. I was wondering if it's possible to build a step in wherever it's wherever a cost might be incurred. Maybe a step could be added that says conduct or, you know, conduct a cost benefit analysis or an impact study if it's relevant to that section.
I think, yeah, Mr. Chris's statement earlier about the text change touched on that if you want to.
I actually think it should be included in the action steps throughout. If that's like, because people will focus on it at different in different places and.
Basically put a disclaimer under them.
You know, just something that says, you know, of course we would, or that's just an action step, a recommended action step is for the appropriate department to hold. Conduct a cost benefit analysis. And, you know, my fear is I actually sent everyone an S L R study where they did work in Harrison and that project. And I've been down to Harrison and I'd been there 20 years ago. I just would not like to see our town mimic something like that. It seems overgrown to me. So I just hope there's more, you know, thoughtful development throughout and that this document lines up with that.
I just realized that the S L R development you're referencing in Harrison didn't happen because of a P O C D, right?
Well, oh, but that the specific part was the transit oriented development. That's why I sent.
The modification to their zoning regulations that allowed that to happen.
Exactly. That's why I just want to be aware.
Just coming off of what you said, in my interpretation, so maybe maybe you'd also like to see it at the beginning of the document, but in some of your modifications, the language, you actually had the word budgetary, like it, you do sort of reference that as like budgetary things could get in, you know, could change our consideration on this and unforeseen circumstances. So maybe so it's there in the end. So maybe to Maria's point, you put it in the beginning too.
And within each section.
Would you assume that we wouldn't do that? I mean, I just think that's kind of silly. And not, no, I don't, I'm sorry. I don't mean to say that. Just to expect that we wouldn't take that into consideration before we embarked on something like this. I would hope that as a town, we would do a cost benefit like analysis of it, but
I think if we're.
Maybe a blanket over like the entire like document saying that that would be something that would be recommended.
I just think if it's an aspirational set of action steps.
Yeah.
I don't think it would hurt to include it where it might be applicable. Yeah.
Five minutes. So in the service of time, I want to thank you for your work and also just say that I've also gone through the whole P O C D. Sorry. I have a bunch of.
Of my entire July 4th weekend.
Comments that I'm going to submit through our vice chair. And I wanted to recommend that perhaps there could be a glossary of terms because I things like rogue diet. There's a line in here, the strategy 1.3 to promote the Institute for Transportation and Development Policies, eight transit oriented development principles. That's a mouthful. What does that mean? Could you define it something like a Wayfair Wayfaring Study? So those are the concerns that I have if that not coming from the public. That doesn't sound like people in the public would know enough to say that. So my concern is, and I know when you did the implementation study, Maria did ask about that. There was lots of efforts and I commend you on all your efforts to get as much public, you know, engagement as possible. But it's really like in my field, it's self selected development, right? It's people who want to respond. It's people who come to your meetings, but there's a whole bunch of other people. So in the first survey, it was 11%. So you've got, you know, a bunch of 89% of New Canaan, we don't know how they feel. And then we've got, when you did the implementation survey, it was like 55 people max, which is point 0012 or something of New Canaan. So that's when you took the input, you had your consultant, everyone comes together and they operationalize. What does this mean? How do you come up with these terms? So that's the part that I'm struggling with is and and people have mentioned the T O D, the T O D, I think is a little bit different than the P P D because now it's much more out in the public and it's it's a lot different because it's a very specific quarter mile, half mile. Is there a way to get more engagement of that 89% of New Canaan who maybe don't know what a T O D is? They live a quarter mile from the train station, they live a half mile. And then my last question, I'm going to leave you with this is I guess I'm also struggling with is why does a T O D allow plan development? Because you guys seem to be doing a pretty good job already. So I don't, I don't understand why if we have village district guidelines and we have all these other regulations that I understand some of them need to be changed. What is the advantage to us getting ahead of the game, so to speak, on the T O D? And that that's something that I don't I don't understand, but I don't, I don't think we have time to discuss that now. But so those are some of the questions that are going to be coming from me.
Thank you. Just to answer your T O D question, I think the goal is to define what T O D means for New Canaan rather than letting the state define it for us.
Yes.
Simply put.
The state were to pass a statute that required transit oriented development, let's say, would our plan supersede that because it was? It was.
We don't know.
Okay.
You know, we don't know what the state's going to dictate. We're just.
But is there some world in which are they would say, if you already have a T O D plan in place, we're going to let that, we're going to let you handle that. I mean, so to me, it sounds like this is, we're betting on this being a way to maintain local control in the event that T O D is passed in Hartford rather than have it imposed upon us.
We don't do anything.
Yeah.
Then we are going to be victims of whatever Hartford defines it as.
That's right. Right. So it so and by, when you say do anything, a very big part of that, anything that we should do is have a T O D plan.
Or the option of a T O D plan is defensive, and at least in my view. I would reiterate the example I gave of A D U's or accessory dwelling units. You know, let's say the state uses that model and says, well, if you already have one, you can, you can keep it. But if you don't, you got to take ours. Well, we got ours made here in public with input from the people. I think that's a win for the town.
You don't, I mean, we don't have a crystal ball, so we don't know what could come from Hartford, but this situates us if it's the same sort of trajectory as A D U, as the A D U, it could be.
It's a zoning tool at the end of the day to incentivize potential developers because developers are interested in New Canaan to use tools that the town creates, not the state creates, whether it's 830 G or a future T O D. It's another tool in our tool belt to say, hey, we have this great other thing that was written in New Canaan that's for New Canaan.
One thing I'll point out that there was some comments from the public, which were very helpful, worried about rapid development. We don't build anything. We don't. We deal with applications from people who want to build something. And so we want to ensure that we have the tools and policy in place, place so that whatever applications come in over the transom are going to be within a context that we like, we as a community like and support as opposed to, well, let's just hope for the best. That's not something I want to sign up for, frankly.
Okay, Christine's going to make a last comment and then we're going to wrap it up. So go ahead.
The comment was in answer to what stated at having send the papers. I just checked my emails. You sent me an email last night at 8 p.m. So I didn't get to it. So I didn't know it was received, but there is no list of all the members on Town Council yet. We will have that ready for the next meeting.
Great. Thank you.
So on process, so I suggest the following that he as as the body, I think, set a deadline. When's our next meeting, the 18th?
18th, I believe. Yes.
So planning being here in the 18th, we'll keep the agenda probably limited just to P O C D because I don't want some huge meeting. I suggest that by next, what's next Wednesday's date?
September 11th.
I suggest by September 11th, the Town Council by the close of business, submit any, you know, that they have with this P O C D. We we collect them by Wednesday, close of business by Thursday, if we can generate a document that the entire Town Council will see and it'll be transmitted to our illustrious panel here and they'll be prepared to discuss, they'll go through the whatever filtration process they have that Rita was asking about and be prepared to discuss those issues slash questions at our at our regular meeting next on the 18th. Like I said, we want to keep this thing on track, but now we, there's more breathing room than I had understood. Now that Ira Bloom has weighed in on this, there's a little bit more time. This is an important document. We have to get it right. It's, we got it, you know, I think some of us believe it needs to be balanced a little bit more. So we have the time, we're going to get it right. We have a fantastic crew here that's monitoring it. We have awesome brains here looking at it. So that's my suggestion. So whatever issues you have, if you have them, great. If you don't, that's fine. But that's what I think us should be moving forward so we can keep this on a, on a fast track to get it where it needs to be.
You set the stage. I think that's fantastic. I think there's been a lot of collaboration and comments and communication tonight. Really appreciate everyone's feedback and everything you've done. But I think in a week, we can come back together and we can be aligned in what what our efforts are going to be going forward.
Thank you. Okay. With that, motion to adjourn. Second, Kim. Thank you all. Thank you, everyone who.